Let me convene the regular meeting of the City Council, people of the Senate. And let me ask for a roll call.
Jacobson. Finnoukin.
Here.
Marquart.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker. Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Six present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I am aware Alderman Baker is out of town. Alderman Jacobson just stepped out of the room, so I'll assume he's returning to our meeting. Let me ask Detective Sullivan to come forward for the Pledge of Legions. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have before us the agenda for this evening. I would like to remove item E3B. The appointment to the Police Pension Board, I'm still working on that appointment and will return it to a future meeting. But at this point, I'd like to remove that from this evening's agenda. Are there any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as revised. So move. Moved by Alderman Favor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Roll call, please.
Jacobson. Finnoukin.
Yes.
Marquart.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Six I.
Thank you, motion carried. Our first item then is under Proudly DeKalb, the DeKalb High School Football Team. We have several guests present with us this evening. Let me turn to the coach of that group, if you'd come to the podium, please.
We'd first like to thank the City of DeKalb and Proudly DeKalb for all the support that we had this year. You know, we really enjoyed, and I think the players here can say the same thing, they really enjoyed and were proud of holding up the Proudly DeKalb signs when we took the pictures and everything this year after another successful season by these guys. You know, these are the guys that are here right now. Unfortunately, we'd have probably packed the place, but we have a track meet going on, a baseball game going on, a soccer game going on, and we promote as many of our athletes to do as many things as we possibly can. So, you know, as much as I thank these guys for being here, there's a lot of other athletes of DeKalb High School that wish they could be here and appreciate it.
Okay. Coach Wettler, correct.
Yes.
I'd like to extend appreciation from City Council for the efforts that the DeKalb High School Football Team has put into the season. You really reflect positively on our community and what our community represents, so thank you for that effort. And just remind me, how far in the playoffs did you go?
We got to the quarterfinals. That means we won two games, and then we lost to the eventual state champs, Montini, at home in the quarters.
Very good. Well, thank you for the presentation this evening and congratulations on a good season.
If I may, Coach, I'd like to ask one question. What date is it this fall that you beat Sycamore?
What day? To be honest with you, you know, you talk to these guys, that's an important game, but for us, I think we're thinking of bigger and better things even nowadays when we're playing football. So, you know, we have a lot of fun, and I've been here for three years, this will be four. The first year, we didn't come out successful, and the last two years that we did were a lot more fun.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Okay, let me next turn to Matt Duffy to introduce the inaugural DeKalb Chamber Restaurant Week.
Good evening. Apparently, they've heard me speak before, so. Thanks for having me today. As mentioned, my name is Matt Duffy, I'm the Executive Director for the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, and you may see me drool, and it may be one of two reasons. I just came from the dentist, so I still have a little bit of numbness going on here. But the other thing is that this is the first inaugural DeKalb Chamber Restaurant Week, and the idea of this is we have a restaurant group that we started, and we wanted to bring to light the different types of restaurants that we have here in the community. We have 28 different participating restaurants, and all different types, breakfast, breakfast, lunch, lunch, dinner. We've got fine dining, we've got casual dining, all different types of things, but it's been a great first year for it. It started yesterday, so it's all through this week. There's special offers, there's discounts, there's special meals, there's special items, but all throughout the course of the week. So stop in any of these participating businesses. You can go to dekalb.org to get a list of participating businesses, as well as the special offers that they have. But a great chance to check out some of the dining that we have in the area, and it's great that we have this many different participating restaurants, so. Any questions on that for me?
Questions for Matt? Thank you for the initiative, Matt, and thank you to those 28 venues that are participating.
Absolutely. I'll leave a copy with Ann Ray in case she's trying to decide where to go to dinner tonight.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, next, I have a proclamation. I see Sven Oscar Hansen is present with us this evening. Let me ask Sven to come forward and introduce Glidden Florist's 80th Anniversary, and then I have the proclamation following him.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank the city and the community for all the support we're getting. We've been around 80 years now, and it started with the humble beginning of Mabel Glidden starting to sell flowers from her yard in a small lean-to greenhouse in 1936. And that quickly turned into a flower shop, and we've been rolling ever since, reinventing ourselves a few times and coming up with new ideas to serve the community. So I want everybody to know about it, and this proclamation is gonna be, is a nice step towards that, to getting the community to see, to acknowledge that. And it's a nice coincidence that Proudly DeKalb is doing so much now, because we can be part of that, because we feel very much Proudly DeKalb, so.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for that introduction, Oscar. And let me read the proclamation, and then I'll present it to you. We're titled Glidden Florist 80th Anniversary. Whereas the Glidden Florist is a family-owned and operated business that has been part of this community since 1936, when Mabel Glidden began raising flowers in a small greenhouse. And whereas, since the purchase of the business in 1975 by the Hanson family, growth has continued steadily. And whereas Glidden Florist stands as one of DeKalb County's largest businesses with a reputation for high quality and service to its customers. And whereas Glidden Florist, in support of the local spirit of hashtag Proudly DeKalb, plans an anniversary year of celebratory events. Therefore, I, John A. Ray, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby recognize the many contributions Glidden Florist has made to our community, and urge my fellow residents to join me in congratulating them on 80 years of happiness and wishing them continued success in the years to come. Signed, Mayor John A. Ray, and the city seal is attached.
Wow, that's wonderful. Thank you. It's amazing.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Oscar. And congratulations. Okay, moving to the next proclamation this evening, titled Non-Discrimination of Religious Belief. And I would just offer that this proclamation is in light of some of the global, national, and local activities that have been going on with regard to discrimination against different religious groups. Whereas, a national effort has begun to fight hate and discrimination that has appeared against religious belief. Whereas locally, we have worked hard to battle discrimination, and we are proud of those efforts. Whereas, the religiously-based beloved community has begun to reach out to our community to participate in this inner-faith effort and has received support. Whereas, this anti-discrimination initiative is consistent with the tenants of Chapter 49 of our local municipal code, that is, the Human Relations Commission. Whereas, differential treatment of individuals and groups based on fear and hatred is not what DeKalb as a welcoming community is about. Whereas, education and communication is necessary to overcome unrealistic fears. Therefore, as Mayor of the City of DeKalb, I encourage citizens to embrace the spirit and intent of anti-discrimination and foster discussion about how to support the city's inclusiveness goals in light of hate statements made towards certain groups. Discrimination based on race, creed, color, gender, religion, age, national origin or ancestry, physical or mental disability, marital status, matriculation, or sexual orientation is prohibited. We are about understanding, peace, health, safety, and general welfare of all members of the City of DeKalb community. Signed, John A. Ray, Mayor. And I'll be presenting this proclamation to the beloved community following this evening. Moving next to proclamation on Code Enforcement Officer Month, April 2016. Gene, did you want to introduce this?
Yes, Your Honor, and thank you to the City Council, City staff, and our community. The proclamation coming forward tonight, the first one, is in regard to Code Enforcement Officer Month. And just a few brief words in regard to that, on behalf of the members of the Crime Free Housing and Inspection Bureau that are here. If I could get you to come, stand up and come on up. The five inspectors that are here representing the division, and they're only short their full-time clerical support person, and Carl, their coordinator, who couldn't be here tonight. They're carrying the load on residential and rental properties that was once carried by nine full-time personnel. These inspectors are all part-time, and the work that they've done will be demonstrated in their annual report, which, as your schedule permits, hopefully will be before you in May of this year, just a few weeks down the road. But the remarkable thing about them is, not only they carry a big load, but they've demonstrated results. And results not only in addressing property maintenance issues, but in addressing real crime issues. In areas where they've focused their attention, the calls for service in the reduction in crime has been noticeable. It's been a significant part of the four-year decline in crime, both Part I and Part II crimes. So without further ado, I'd like to thank them, I hope the community does too. Gentlemen, if I can get you to step up to the dais. Sir, you have Michael Stucker, Frank Beasley, Ryan Fisher, Michael Johnson, and Rich Reynolds.
Let me read the proclamation. Code Enforcement Officer Month, April 2016. Whereas Code Enforcement Officers provide for safety, health, and welfare of citizens and communities throughout the state of Illinois through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances, dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety. And whereas, Code Enforcement Officers often have a challenging and demanding role, and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas, the role of many Code Enforcement Officers has expanded in recent years with the increased number of foreclosed and abandoned homes in communities impacted economically. And whereas, Code Enforcement Officers are dedicated, highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance ordinances and ordinances, I'm sorry, nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas, Code Enforcement Officers often have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and regularly interact with a variety of state, county, first responder, and legislative boards, commissions, agencies, and bodies within the capacity of their role in the community. And whereas, Code Enforcement Officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve. And whereas, the City of DeKalb wants to recognize and honor Code Enforcement Officers that serve our community and acknowledge the role of the Crime Free Housing Code Enforcement Officers in leading the way to improve the quality of life within our community. And now therefore, be proclaimed by the Mayor and the City Council of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, that the month of April 2016 be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Month in the City of DeKalb, and call upon its residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our Code Enforcement Officers. Signed, John A. Ray, Mayor. And join me again in thanking our Code Enforcement Group. Chief Lowery.
Sir, next on the agenda is a proclamation in regard to National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April 10th through the 16th. Tonight, representing our Communications Division is Latoya Mars. Just a few brief words. Again, division comprised of 11 full-time and six part-time folks when we're fully staffed. Last year, 2015, they processed 44,000 calls for service or events, and over 23,000 911 calls. Very heavy load.
Okay. The proclamation is titled National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 10th through 16th, 2016. Whereas, emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, an emergency occurs, the prompt requires the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics. It's critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the police-fire communications center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of the City of DeKalb have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, I, John A. Ray, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby declare the week of April 10th through 16th, 2016 to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed, John A. Ray, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, I forgot to, Mayor and Council, I forgot to add that I overlooked the 5,000-plus fire calls that were also dispatched by our dispatch center. Tonight, representing the Communications Division and telecommunicators is a coordinator, Latoya Mars.
Okay, the next proclamation I have this evening is titled Earth Day, April 22nd, 2016. Whereas, on April 22nd, 1970, more than 20 million Americans participated in the first Earth Day celebrations. Faced with contaminated rivers and polluted cities, these ordinary citizens gathered in the streets, in parks, and on college campuses across the country to fight for air, water, and wildlife protections. And whereas, Earth Day, 1970, galvanized a movement leading to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency, the passage of basic legislation needed to save our environment and to Protection Agency, the passage of basic legislation needed to save our environment, and a spirit of stewardship that continues to drive us to meet new environmental challenges. And whereas with remarkable, while remarkable progress has been made in protecting our health and our natural heritage, our work is not yet finished. For example, 15 billion trees are lost each year. A warming climate is causing droughts, floods, heat waves, and polluted air. Animal species are going extinct at a faster rate than ever before, and buildings do not use energy efficiently. And whereas 46 years ago, a generation rallied together to protect the earth we would inherit. As we reflect on that historic day of activism and stewardship, let us embrace our commitment to the generations yet to come by leaving them a safe, clean world on which to make their mark. Now therefore, I, John A. Ray, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2016 as Earth Day, and encourage all citizens to participate in programs and activities that will protect our environment and contribute to a greener, healthier, and more sustainable future. Signed, John A. Ray, Mayor. Okay, that concludes the proclamations this evening. Let me then move to presentations. And our first this evening is our Human Service Funding Annual Report from Kish Health/DeKalb County Partnership for Substance Abuse Free Environment by the Director of Community Wellness, Dawn Rosnowski. Dawn? I hope I pronounced that correctly. Thank you.
You did very well. Thank you for having me here this evening. As indicated, I am with Kish Health System, now part of Northwestern Medicine, and I'm here to speak in regard to the funding that's provided to DCP SAFE under what was Ben Gordon, still is Ben Gordon, under the Health System. So, reporting on quarter three, in the past, you probably had other folks here to speak. I'm here tonight as the director to talk to you about what has taken place in quarter three. We have been working with the schools, specifically, when we talk about schools, I'll reference DeKalb schools, to participate in the Illinois Youth Survey, which is a risk factor survey focused on eighth, 10th, and 12th grade students. And so, at this point in time, all DeKalb, city of DeKalb schools have signed up to take the survey. The Coalition hosted the annual assembly, and the focus was on alcohol, drug, and tobacco prevention, and it was well-attended. The Coalition has also participated in the, some parent advisory groups to focus on a media campaign around alcohol, tobacco, and other drug prevention work. The Coalition did not spend any money in the third quarter. We plan to spend money in the fourth quarter with prom and other activities coming up at the end of the year to promote alcohol and tobacco and other drug use prevention. So, any questions for me?
Dawn, I'm not sure you mentioned how long DCP SAFE has been in existence?
Um, I believe it has been, boy, you're gonna quote me on that?
Eighties.
Yes, I would say well over 20 years.
Yeah, that sounds correct. I recall the first assembly being in the 1980s. Other questions of Dawn? And what grade levels are involved in the survey?
Um, in the survey is eighth grade, 10th, and 12th grade students.
Excellent.
And so, the goal is, the Coalition, to focus on the entire county, all county schools, but the one good thing is, is that all the city schools in DeKalb have signed up and registered, or have taken the survey.
Excellent. And you have benchmarks of previous surveys to compare progress?
That is correct.
Excellent. Alderman Noriko.
Do you know if St. Mary in school in DeKalb participates?
Um, private schools are not required to participate under the grant. We do reach out to those schools to invite them to participate. All private schools. At this point in time, they're not registered, though. I do know that.
Okay.
Questions? Survey results will be out probably in June, and that goes to the school districts, so they'll have that information.
Excellent. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to the Fire Department Annual Report, I'll turn to Chief Eric Hicks for introduction of this topic. Chief Hicks?
Fire, I don't know if you can bring up the report? There we go. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to bring this report tonight. It demonstrates the many accomplishments that the Fire Department has accomplished over the past year. This report is designed to be a historical document, and will be placed on the website for review after tonight, under the Fire Department tab. As you can see, the front page of that report is probably one of our most proud moments of the year, when we received our new aerial ladder truck. This is a project the city's been working on since 2007 to try to replace. At a glance, I'll go over some quick statistics here. In 1969, this fire department was organized and became a fully paid service in 1926. Our current budget is $9,735, and we respond to 55-point square miles in the city and surrounding parts of the city in the Fire Protection District. We currently have six ambulances, four fire engines, and two ladder trucks, and responded to 5,392 incidents last year. Gonna hit a few quick budget slides here. Last year, we had a non-personnel budget of $434,412, with the biggest portion of that being taken up in three different sections. One being in fire and firefighting supplies, which is $113,000. Admin, which basically the things that keep our lights on, our fuel, utilities, things like that, was 106, and then our vehicle maintenance file closely was $74,000 after that. The biggest share of our personnel, of our budget, is personnel, which accounts for 95.5% of that, and you can see the figures here. Without that, would be a revenue slide. We currently bring in, in the last year, of $1,683,000. Majority of that is brought in by ambulance revenue, which is about $850,000, brought in, and the rest is brought in by some other private contracts. Alternative funding. We always apply for every grant that becomes available. This year was our most successful grant year since 2005, bringing in $246,156, with the biggest grant coming from a mobile training towel, which I'm gonna be bringing next week for your review. That was $239,000 with that. We also did receive three other grants this year, one from 3M, Allstate Foundation, and the State Fire Marshal. We always try to upgrade our buildings each year. Each year, we try to do something to improve them. As you talked about, in the last few years, our buildings were in disrepair, and they're now in some of the best shape they've been in my career here. Station one, we did some capital improvements. We renovated and updated the training room, replaced the apparatus floor furnaces and thermostats, and did a new parking lot. Station two, received a upgrade to the living quarters, and that was done by the firefighters through the Foreign Fire Tax Fund, and also replacement of the front apparatus door. Station three received a complete exterior paint job. Talk about the administrative division. In the administrative division of the Fire Department, there's 5.5 people assigned. A fire chief, a deputy chief, deputy chief of training, and a fire prevention lieutenant, and also an administrative analyst and office associate. Through that is where we monitor the budget, keep all the logistical functions going, manage emergency management, and also our training officers able to work with the personnel on shift in the operations division, and they completed 19,115, 58 hours of training last year, throughout the 57 members of the department. Fire prevention. Fire prevention is something we work every day on. It's one of our core missions. We do have one person assigned to the fire prevention office, and along with the shift inspectors, we do have the shifts that go out and do inspections every day. And this, we're in charge of the rooming house, fire life safety, gas station inspections, commercial industrial inspections, motel, hotel motel, and the gaming inspections. Those are our big programs that we do with inspections throughout the city. Talk about violations. Last year, we had 2,437 inspections completed, and this year, we completed 2,685. That was largely due to the new commercial building inspection program, which we started back in June, and we completed just about a third of those buildings this time. We've had great public response, and we're hoping to make that even, even better. This summer, I'm gonna bring back a full report with a commercial building inspection, along with some inspections to make it even more business-friendly than it currently is. Public education. Like I say, this is another one of our core missions. We, we attend any event that's offered to us, block parties, nights out, school fairs, so you'll all see, always see our public personnel out in the public. These are some stats on what we attended last year. Last year, we attended 95 different events, which served approximately 6,500 children and 3,200 adults. So, and next year, we're looking to expand that even farther with a public education on cooking with care, and we're gonna try to highlight some target areas throughout town that are having some problems, community CPR, and some other education at the schools. Some quick statistics. Last year was our lowest fire lost in any previous of the 15 years, with $689,000. So, it's about $150,000 in less than any previous year in history, in the last 15 years. Cause of ignition. When we're doing cause and origin, we always try to find out what started the fire. 28 incidents last year were unintentional, and what that basically means is they started from, from people, they're by accident. So, the highest incidents we had were for candles and cooking. So, those are some of the areas we're gonna concentrate on next year on our fire prevention Our operations division, there's 53 persons assigned to that division, three battalion chiefs, three captains, nine lieutenants, and 38 firefighters. Those are the people that are out there in the streets every day, run the calls 24 hours a day. Our response areas and our fire stations. Currently, we have three fire stations in the three different response areas. You can see one, two, and three, and then also is the same as the corresponding fire stations. Station one last year responded to 1,771 calls. Station two, which is our largest response area, responded to 1,443 calls, and Station three accounted for 40% of the calls, or 2,178 of those calls. Request for service. This year, we had a 1.2% increase in service. Very manageable, with our biggest increase in the EMS section, which is by 86%. Also, there was a slight increase in motor vehicle accidents. This is a percentage of calls by different types. EMS accounted for 75% of the calls, followed by false alarms at 500, service calls at 330, hazmat calls at 187, and structure fires at 155. This chart here is kind of by weekly activity, and the reason I put this in is so you can see we're busy pretty much every day of the week, and at all times of the week. We run consistently around 800 calls. Monday this year was busiest, last year was Friday. There's no rhyme or reason, this is just the way, that way it's been. The blue time is the nighttime calls, and there's any call after 8:00 PM, and the yellow time is the daytime calls. So, put this in here so people realize that we're busy 24 hours a day. Incidents by time of day. Again, this year, just like last year, our busiest time of the day between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. It's just, it's been consistent that way for the last few years. But like I say, we are busy pretty much every day, all day long, you can see by the different times. Simultaneous calls. Reason we track this is we wanna know how often your fire stations are empty. This year, we had a 2.6, 2.56% decrease in simultaneous calls. Like I say, it's very important to monitor, because you wanna know how often your stations are empty. The next section is our most concerning increase of all. Six times, this is simultaneous calls, six or more. So, last year, we had a 28.5% increase in six or more calls, and what that means is all your fire stations are empty, we've called people in from home, and we have other people from outside of agencies responding to calls in town. So, that's kind of a concerning number. We hope that trend drops off next year. Mutual aid, like I say, we do participate, mutual aid, we also give mutual aid. So, last year, the majority of mutual aid was given to Sycamore and Malta, and, which was 95 times, and this year, we only received mutual aid 49 times. Part of the way of that is because our personnel are able to get in service a lot quicker now. We've done some technology upgrades that have allowed our reporting to become a lot Quick staffing update. Last year, we did add a part-time administrative associate, office associate, that person in the last five months, and that person was hired in order to assist in our cost recovery, timely cost recovery, because we found out the quicker you can build, the more funding you can recoup. So, in her first five months of employment, we were able to invoice $32,960 more than the previous year. So, that did work out. Couple of quick statistics. These are some interesting facts. We have a fire response every two and a half days, and that records 151 fire responses. Structure fire about every five days. This year, we had four civilian injuries through fire, and we did have, we do a false alarm about every 17 and a half hours, which is way down from previous years. Number of fire incidents by year, 151, or 155 this year, so we're pretty much on track. There's no alarming facts here. This next slide talks about areas of origin in residential fires. And as you can see, our highest area is in the cooking area, in the kitchen, so we're gonna concentrate that on next year in our public safety presentations. This goes by percent of loss, and what this is, this slide's good to tell you, is for every $100,000, basically, we've saved 96% of that. So, we only have basically a 3% fire loss for every fire that we have. And that's pretty consistent over the years. Little bit about emergency medical services. We have 53 paramedics. We transport one patient to the hospital every 2.9 hours of the year. We have a motor vehicle accident this year, every 26 hours. Every 14 hours, a patient refuses transport, and we currently have 53 paramedics and six ambulances on the street. EMS calls by response level. And I'll talk a little bit about response level. ALS-1 is basically routine cardiac care, which includes a monitor, an IV, and then a 12D DKG, and that's 1,534 calls. ALH-2, which is routine cardiac care and monitor, and multiple drug interventions, that was 364. BLS, which is basically a transport to the hospital, which 1,469, and we did 623 refusals last year. Little bit of our special operations team. Our hazmat team is still a Level A team, which is able to respond statewide. We have 13 members on DeKalb Fire Department that are trained, and are able to respond statewide and handle incidents anywhere. We also have a pretty good cache of equipment from the Terrorism Task Force. Our other special operations team is the technical rescue team, last year that was deployed twice statewide, once to Fairdale, and then once to Woodhaven Lakes. There's 14 members left on that team right now, trained in high angle, confined space, trench collapse, structural collapse, and grain bin entrapment. Now, our team is our RF team, which protects the airport. In closing, I wanna thank the Mayor, Council, City staff, and members of the DeKalb Department for everything for the past year, and I'll entertain any questions that I, you guys may have.
Eric, I'd like to thank you and the entire department for the services that are maintained day in and day out, that really contribute- that really contribute positively to the quality of life in our community. So thank you all for that service. Questions of Eric? Alderman Noriko.
I don't have a question, but I would also like to comment on the courtesy and the professionalism that I've always encountered from fire department staff. And they work under very difficult conditions, under a lot of stress. And they're always gracious and smiling. I very much appreciate their attitude.
Thank you all, pass that on.
Thank you. Eric, thank you for the annual report. It will be available through the department.
Correct. It'll be on the website as of tonight, and it'll be under the Fire Department tab, the download tab.
Thank you.
Actually, it goes back, there's reports back to 2008, so you can kind of read through and see what's happened over the years.
Excellent. Thank you for the report this evening, Eric. Moving to approval of mayoral appointments. I have the appointment of Donna Schultz Exzitas to the Landmark Commission for a two-year term through June 30th, 2018. In front of council this evening, I would ask a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
By Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alderman Markwart.
Jacobson.
Jacobson, I'm sorry. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. Thank you for that support. We have before us a consent agenda, which contains approval of minutes of city council meetings, March 14th, committee of the whole, March 14th, regular meeting. And then we have two special meetings on March 17th. We have accounts payable and payroll through April 11th, 2016. Resolution 201632 is for authorizing the execution of a workman's comp, lump sum petition in order in the amount of $50,000. Brian Sorter Straub. Resolution 201633 is authorizing the execution of a worker's comp, lump sum petition in order in the amount of $35,600. Mario Nanaman. Resolution 201634, authorizing a cooperative agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics, and United States Department of Agriculture Wildlife Services to totally fund a hazardous wildlife assessment at the DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport. And Tom Cleveland, can you help me? This assessment occurs, what, every three, five years? Every five years? Okay, thank you. Resolution 201635, authorizing the execution of a highway permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation for construction of a commercial entrance to Route 23. Resolution 201336, authorizing restaurant liquor license for rosattis, pizza at DeKalb located at 930 Pappas Drive, Unit A. Resolution 201637, authorizing a restaurant low ABV liquor license for Ome Sushi located at 3206 Sycamore Road. Resolution 201638, authorizing a retail tobacco store license for Tanger Hookah Lounge located at 327 East Hillcrest Drive. Resolution 201639, authorizing the mayor, the city manager, to sign an agreement with Impact Networking LLC for the purpose of leasing three Konica Minolta all-in-one copy machines for a five-year period in an amount not to exceed $17,100. Ordinance 20168, publishing the official zoning map of the city. And this is before us on second reading. And the last item in the consent agenda is rejection of a bid from RoadSafe Traffic Systems in the amount of $6,344.85 for the Annie Glidden Highway Safety Improvement Program Sign Upgrade Project. And I might just explain, the rejection of that bid is a result of all the bids coming in over budget. We're anticipating changing the specification for the poles, for those traffic signs, which will, our anticipation is that'll bring the new requests for bids within budget. That is the extent of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanoukun. Roll call.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Okay. Before I ask for a vote on the consent agenda, I realized I've missed public participation. Does anyone, we don't have any forms registered?
No, sir.
This evening. So I assume no one wishes to comment on this, at this point. But this would be the point to comment on anything in the consent agenda. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Snow. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Motion carried. Okay. Next, we have resolution 201640, authorizing a professional service agreement with Fairgram and Associates LLC for the preparation of an economic development program application and for design engineering services and for the execution of a grant application.
Mayor, if I can interject for one second. I see in the audience, we have a number of applicants for licenses that were on the council meeting this evening. Those were just successfully passed. You're certainly welcome to say that your licenses were approved tonight. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Dean. I would ask, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. We'll have discussion. Let me turn to city engineer, John Laskowski.
Evening, mayor and city council. This item and the next one, G2, are both in relationship to IDOT's Economic Development Program. And this was the program that we kind of discussed in relation to the COW presentation of last week regarding the Peace Road Widening Project. So just a little background on the Peace Road Widening Project. We had discussed at the COW that the purpose of that project was to address some safety concerns, to increase the capacity of the road, improve access, and to promote economic development. And after that, we discussed the different ways that this project could be funded. So currently, we're utilizing federal funding. It's on the Transportation Improvement Program through DSAT. So that federal funding funds the project at a 20% local share to an 80% federal share. And this program now is an opportunity for the city to participate in a reimbursement program. So along the lines of leveraging existing funds, the Peace Road Widening Project has the opportunity to apply for economic development programming, the reimbursement program. And what this program does is it allows the city to match 50% of the funding of a project up to $4 million. So if we, in this case, we've identified a portion of that Peace Road Widening Project that would extend from I-88 north to just past MACOM as a potential project. The cost of that project is roughly around $4.4 million. So the most that the state would be able to contribute towards that project would be $2 million. But the cost of the project itself would be $4.4 million. Now, when the project goes out to bid or when it's designed, the city would have the opportunity to reduce that amount of the cost of the project to fit within the parameters of the grant to $4 million if it chose to do so. So basically, what this application is doing right now, or this item right now, is before you to partner with Fairgram, who is a consulting engineering firm that would be preparing the application for this grant program. And then it would also authorize us to execute those documents associated with the application. In addition, the agreement would also allow us, there's a second agreement that would allow us then to utilize Fairgram as the design engineer if the grant application was successful and if the city council approved the grant and the project going forward. So that's the first item before you. If there's any questions on that, I'd be willing to answer those. And I guess, Mayor, I could either allow you to proceed with the action on this item or I can explain item G2 as well.
I think I prefer to keep us focused on this first item, phase one. And I would note that the approval of this phase one engineering agreement has no immediate financial impact. The city would need to fund the local share, which would return to city council as a separate consideration. And then if the local share is approved, the total project cost would include engineering services contemplated.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah. And I could add to that, there's a potential of the funding that the city has in place through the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study as the phase one portion of this project. There's currently a project that's funded up to $1.4 million. And the city is responsible for 20% of that $1.4 million. So that funding, that 1.4, would be eligible towards the $2 million of the Economic Development Program grant. So we're leveraging leveraged funds, I guess.
Okay. Are there questions of engineer Laskowski? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. Motion carried. Next, we have, resolution 201641, authorizing a partnership agreement for participation in the IDOT Economic Development Program. So this is phase two. Let me ask for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markwart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. Discussion. City engineer.
So this is the second component of that economic development program. What this item before you is asking for action to allow the city to engage private industry in a partnership. It's one of the requirements of the economic development program, to partner with private industry and then demonstrate that industry is either retaining or creating new jobs. And so it's simply an agreement acknowledging that partnership.
Okay. Questions or discussion? Alderman Noriko.
Does 3M have a responsibility to put any money on the table apart from the job creation?
They have no obligation to put money forward as part of this agreement. They certainly are allowed to contribute towards the local match of the overall grant application. So they would be eligible to contribute funding in addition to the city's funding.
And they know that they're eligible to contribute?
I believe they are.
As a component of this resolution, it wouldn't necessarily just be 3M. The city could work with other industrial users that'd be benefited by this or by future industrial users that may come in in the short term while we're dealing with the grant application. So this really allows us to partner with anyone that could benefit from the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. Motion carried. Resolution 201642, awarding a contract and approving an engineering services agreement for bridge and culvert inspection services to Hanson Professional Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fanoukun. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. Discussion. City engineer Laskowski.
This item is part of a program that's required to be performed by the Illinois Department of Transportation. On a 24 to 48 month cycle, depending on the bridge, we're required by the National Bridge Inspection Standards to inspect all of our bridges. So the city of DeKalb has seven bridges in town. And this year, we're going to be, we're requesting a little more in-depth study of these structures because we're aware that the bridge on First Street is starting to deteriorate and that we're going to potentially have the use of major bridge funds coming up in the future, probably five, 10 years out. As part of this proposal, the city had gone through the typical qualifications-based selection process. So we sent out our RFQ. The responses came back. We sent out the RFP to four of the most qualified firms. From those, we identified at that time Civil Tech, Baxter and Women, Missman Stanley, and Hanson Professional Engineers. We engaged in the interview process with all of those engineering firms and decided that Hanson was the most qualified firm at this time. Hanson is out of Rockford. And one of the things that made them uniquely qualified for this job is the fact that they had designed three of these bridges. The Taylor Street Bridge, the Fairview Street Bridge, and the Hillcrest Bridge. And so they have a fairly comprehensive understanding of the bridges at hand. And we're confident that they would do a good job on the bridge inspection. Now, as another component of this inspection is the culverts inspection. Now, culverts have never been inspected before by the city staff to get an understanding of the impact that they may have in the future. So culverts are equally as important to bridges. The difference being, you know, culverts tend to carry water, whereas bridges carry traffic. And so what we've learned in the interview process through Hanson Professionals had identified that there's actually, one of our culverts needs to be included in the National Bridge Inspection Standards. There's a culvert that's longer than 20 feet and it's in the Devonera Farms subdivision, going under Devonera Farms, Devonera Parkway. And that structure now qualifies because it's larger than, longer than 20 feet to be in this program. So the good thing about that is, is once you're in the program, the culverts are eligible for funding through the state. And again, that funding is generally leveraged at about a 10 to 90% funding ratio. But I think the important part to highlight with the culvert inspections is it's going to give us a comprehensive understanding of the needs of these structures in the short, medium, and long term. So what we've asked for in this proposal is for the consultant to prepare us kind of a schedule of maintenance, so we can understand what financial resources should be allocated in the near term, the medium term, and then the long term. And so this is going to be something that kind of correlates to the street maintenance program and the water infrastructure program to try to get ourselves in a situation where we're anticipating the maintenance needs of all of our infrastructure. So I think that's a summary of this proposal here, or this agreement with Hanson Professionals for the inspection of the bridge and culverts. And if there's any questions regarding the agreement, I'd like to answer them for you.
Alderman Fanoukun.
Just one quick question, John. Six of the seven bridges are self-explanatory where they are. All the culvert locations are self-explanatory from what's in the backup. But item four under bridges, Annie Glidden over an unnamed tributary, where is that on Annie Glidden Road?
So that's, as you're going, let me make sure I tell you the right one.
Maybe if you can identify something near it.
Yeah, it's, I believe this is, it may also be a culvert. It's either going to be, there's a box structure going under Annie Glidden Road, just north of the Hampton Inn
Okay.
and south of the Viaduct.
All right. So that's the one you believe is?
I believe it's that one.
All right. Thank you.
Are there questions of John? Or discussion on the motion before us? Hearing none, I'll ask. Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving to ordinances then, ordinance 2016-9, amending chapter 38, intoxicating liquors, section 38 dot 07, classification of liquor licenses, and section 38 dot 13, restrictions applicable to hospitality sales of the city's municipal code as it pertains to hospitality liquor licenses for hotels. This is before us, first reading, I would ask for a motion to approve, I'm sorry, Alderman Fanouken, move to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. This is the first of three ordinances related to chapter 38 of our liquor code that were discussed in the COW this evening, is there further discussion at this point with this ordinance before us, the first reading? Hearing none, I'll ask, ask for a roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-10, amending chapter 38 intoxicating liquors, section 38 dot 07, classification of liquor licenses of the city's municipal code as it pertains to BYOB liquor licenses for restaurants, and again, this is before us, the first reading this evening. Is there a motion? So moved by Alderman Jacobson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart to approve, discussion. Roll call.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Motion carried. The third ordinance before us this evening is part of our separate action, is ordinance 2016-11, amending chapter 38 intoxicating liquors, section 38 dot 12, restrictions applicable to restaurant sales of the city's municipal code as it pertains to the service of real food requirement for low ABV restaurants, and again, this is before us in first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanouken, discussion. Alderman Snow?
I still kind of have issues with this one, I guess, I really don't want restaurants to become a place for a hangout for drinking low alcohol beer or wine for hours of time without any food, so I, I'm not sure that I can support this one.
I think there has been interest from citizens in the community that would like the opportunity to do work on a workstation at a restaurant, possibly having beer or wine without food, so I don't know that it's just consumption of the alcohol that would be the motivating behavior. Other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Snow?
No.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Five I?
Okay, motion carried. With that, that brings us to communications, Alderman Jacobson.
No report.
Alderman Fanouken?
No report.
Alderman Markwart?
Just like to remind everybody that you have one week to get your taxes filed, your tax preparers would appreciate if you would turn in your stuff tomorrow, make an appointment to get that done.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
I'd just like to remind citizens to remember to check your license plate stickers, make sure they're current, because the state's no longer sending out renewal notices on those, and I think there still may be some issues on that, so please check your license plates.
Thank you. Alderman Noriko?
I'm planning another Ward Five meeting, it will be held Saturday, April 23rd, at Barb City Manor, from 10:00 to 11:30, I'm going to follow a format similar to what I did at the first meeting, people seem to like that, I survived, and so I'll give some information about matters that we've considered in the last several months since my meeting in January, and then I'll respond to questions, comments, et cetera.
Thank you. Alderman Favor?
Nothing to report.
Okay. City manager, Cora?
No report.
City attorney?
No report.
Interim city clerk?
No report.
Assistant city manager?
No report.
Chief Lowry?
Two quick things, April 23rd, 10 a.m., will be the Walk to End Child Abuse, the Walk to End Child Abuse will be hosted at Sycamore High School, several police officers will be available there to have pies thrown in their face for a small donation, it's a very worthwhile fundraiser, and I would encourage folks to be there, April 23rd, 10 a.m., Sycamore High School, servicing not only DeKalb-Sycamore, but the entire county. Also, April 24th is the Police Benevolent and Protective Association Breakfast, it's at the Knights of Columbus at 1336 East Lincoln Highway, it's from 8 a.m. to noon, it's, it's our annual PBMPA benevolent breakfast that is our charitable arm of our organization that does things within the community, and also helps out members of our department that are, may be facing some personal crisis. Again, 8 a.m. to noon, adults are $5, kids age seven to 11 are $2, and kids under seven are free.
Thank you, chief. Finance director, Haley?
No report.
Chief Hicks?
No report.
Director DeVita? Director Holdenman?
Remind everyone that NIU Cares is this Saturday, and we'll have volunteers located around the Central Business District, and City Hall, and other locations, we will also be recognized for 10 years of participating in this program.
Thank you. I would like to remind council and the community that Northern Illinois University has launched its Diversity Dialogues this year as a series, the theme for the Diversity Dialogue Series is intersectionality. The recent invitation is for Thursday, April 21st, from 6 to 8 p.m. in the Regency Room of Home Student Center, the dialogue will be a conversational workshop with two guests, Katie Gordon and Amina Khan, both of whom will guide through interactive dialogue. The event is free and open to all, the writer activist, Amina Khan, and Interfaith Services Coordinator at Grand Valley State University, Katie Gordon, are the facilitators, they will lead a discussion on creating an inclusive environment with the help of allies and interfaith communities, I would encourage you to attend, participate in that as you are able. Other items, we're at the point of adjournment, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Markwart, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Jacobson, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried, thank you.